I am Chair of the Prince George's County Council and welcome to this hearing tonight on fire services and the reallocation plan. We know how serious this situation is, this topic is, and we really wanted to find an evening that would work for everyone, which is never going to happen in a hundred years, but we did our best and we had several dates we tried. So you'll see some of the council members coming and going at different times so that they can make all the previously scheduled appointments, but we were having this hearing. I don't care, it was happening tonight. So any of them, we'll have each of the council members who are present to introduce themselves and then we will go to Chief Green to start with Tom Drenova.
Good evening, Tom Drenova, Council District One, College Park, Beldsville, Laurel.
Good evening, my name is Edward Burrows, Prince George's County Council member representing District Eight, which is Port Washington, Temple Hills, Oxon Hill, Forest Heights, Glass Manor, from Andrews Air Force Base over to National Harbor, and former colleague of Peggy Higgins on the school board.
Good evening, I'm Edward Watson, I represent District Four, which encompasses the Incorporated City of Bowie, Greenbelt, Westchester Park, Glendale, a small part of Lanham, and a small part of Upper Marlboro.
Good evening, it's great to see everybody here tonight and the interest in the topic tonight. I'm Eric Olson, I represent College Park, Burwyn Heights, Lanham, Seabrook, Landover Hills, New Carrollton, University Park, Riverdale Park, and the greater Riverdale area. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Cindy Harrison, I'm the Vice Chair of the Prince George's County Council, I represent County Council District Nine, which is the southern part of the county, it's about thirty-eight percent of the landmass of the county, so there's a lot of cities in between there. But I just want to take a moment before we get started to thank all the career and volunteer firefighters for the work that they do each and every day in serving the people of Prince George's County. You all are always first to serve. We understand it takes a partnership, but the work that you all do each and every day, you all are the true heroes that serve our county, so thank you very much.
Chief Green, I turn it over to you.
Madam Chief, Councilmember Bouquet, District Six, Councilman Orietta, District Seven, are at a previously scheduled town all week, they would not be here this evening. Additionally, Councilmember Hawkins at large, his wife is experiencing health challenges and is at appointment, that's sure we're here.
Thank you very much. I believe that Councilmember Fisher will be in soon. Okay, and Chief Green?
Good evening, I'm trying to be as fast as I possibly can, I understand this is
because we really do want to leave the bulk of the time for the citizens.
I'm gonna do my best, I'll look as fast as I can. First, let me introduce my command staff that is speaking here today. With me is Deputy Chief Jane DeCullen, who serves as our Operations Deputy Director, Angela Fair, which we all know very well from Budget Kennedy, she manages our Ministry of Services and will be answering any budget-related questions. Assistant Fire Chief Michael White, who oversees our Volunteer Services Office, and Assistant Fire Chief Otis Link, who serves as EBA Officer. We also have a few of our duty chiefs here, as well as members of the Fire Commission and our command staff. This evening, we will present an overview of our staffing reallocation plan, current staff and complements, and needs, as well as our operational footprint. We will also be presenting information regarding our performance times and strategic plan. Slide one please. Councilmembers, most of you have seen this presentation or heard this over the last four years from me. In 2020, at the start of COVID, I came before this council with an overtime budget of seventeen million dollars, and our current staffing at that time was nine hundred and ninety-one sworn personnel. My request from this council was to increase our complement of firefighters to one thousand one hundred and twenty-four and to hire firefighters. It was this council's desire for the Fire Department to find ways to come within the overtime budget, as well as to continue to deliver services to the community. We had a deficit at that time of one hundred and thirty-three positions. As everyone is aware, from 2020 to 2022, the department and the fire service in general dealt with the effects of COVID around departments. Many things took priority, to include the mental health of our first responders that were serving on the front lines. We all felt the effects of the decline in interest in healthcare fields and volunteering in general. As a department, we continued to hire firefighters, and from 2021 to 2022, we hired a total of forty-nine firefighters. At the same time, we saw a drastic increase in firefighters and paramedics that were leaving this field. We have traditionally prided ourselves on knowing, for the most part, people in the fire service complete twenty years or more of service. What I saw was employees only serving for ten years, some five, and mostly leaving for non-public service jobs for various reasons. Our attrition in 2020 was twenty-eight million, we were losing twenty-eight firefighters a year. We are now up to sixty-six for this calendar year. That tells the story. Also in 2022, as a department, we built and staffed with twenty-four people, Station Eight-O-Two Shady Grant. For those of you who have been here for a while, you understand that the design and budgeting for this station started in 2014 under Fire Chief for Shore. This administration was able to get the station completed, but this added to our deficit of firefighters as we continued to grow as an organization. The department also made two operational enhancements. One was to fully staff Station Eight-Forty-Eight, West Lanham Hills. This was an increase of twenty-four personnel. This was a direct result of a fatal fire where we determined that the volunteer coverage in that area was not sufficient. The last enhancements were a direct result of collective bargaining agreement requirements to upstaff apparatus to ensure an optimal workforce gradually by 2026. So where does that leave us? Next slide. In 2021, our total year-to-date mandatory and callback hours was roughly twenty-two thousand hours. In 2022, it rose to thirty-five thousand hours. And then in 2023, we saw a jump to over forty-five thousand hours. To be clear for those who are watching online or who are not sure, mandatory overtime is when we hold personnel past their twenty-four-hour shift, sometimes up to twelve to fourteen hours more. This is also when we call them back to work, twelve hours before their twenty-four-hour shift, regardless of vacation time with families or other obligations, children's birthdays, anniversaries, anything. I even had an employee that resigned due to not being able to take care of her family because of the increase in mandatory hours. During the peak summer month of 2023, we reached a record of holdovers in excess of over a hundred and seventy-seven mandatory shifts for one weekend. At this point, at the request of the then-Unit President, and based on our peer support team members' reports and what we were seeing in our department, to relieve the system, we reduced staffing shortages from four personnel to three to allow personnel to go home. It was a violation of our CBA, but we had no other options that weekend. At this point, the mental health and morale of our department was at its lowest. Many of you received letters and calls from our Unit and our members of the department. I had over a hundred members on various levels of IODA and FMOLA lead. We saw an increase in CHOA calls, accidents, and injuries. We had to do something, so we reduced staff. As we finished out 2023 and started 2024, we entered into the budget cycle with one request: increase our staffing so that we can relieve the system and send people home. Specifically, we requested to hire a hundred and fifty firefighters and increase the complement to fully staff our department to one thousand two hundred and twenty-four. At the same time, we were receiving multiple requests of volunteer corporations asking for twenty-four-hour permanent staffing. They were no longer able to fulfill their obligations to the community and simply wanted to ensure coverage. We were unable to staff those stations. Next slide. In June of 2024, we started our summer staffing reallocation plan with two goals: one, ensure personnel were able to go home, that their personnel working were healthy and suitable to administer care to our community; and lastly, deliver fire and EMS services for the entire county through the reallocation of personnel and services. We reallocated fifty firefighters from four stations: Station Eight-Fifty-Five, Bumper Hill, Eight Thirty-Nine, Luli, Del Air, Eight Fourteen, Burwyn Heights, Eight Thirty-Five, Greenbelt. This was not the first time that the Fire and EMS Department has reallocated resources and personnel. Resources and personnel have been redeployed many times throughout the department's history for various reasons. In July of 2002, Fire Chief Blackwell reassigned firefighters from Connaught City, old Station Eight-O-Two, Branchville, Station Eight-Eleven, and Ritchie, Station Eight Thirty-Seven, in order to combat the impacts of staffing shortages. In April 2004, the Bladesborough Volunteer Fire Department, Station Eight-O-Nine, requested that the county remove the career personnel in order for the county to alleviate some of the burdens relating to staffing shortages and mandatory overtime, very similar to what is going on today. This is now one of the non-volunteer fire departments that is fully staffed by volunteer members and does an outstanding job of providing service. In August of 2009, all career staff were reassigned from Cowbridge, Station Eight Forty-One, Chilum, Station Eight Forty-Four, Riverdale Heights, Station Eight Thirteen, and Capital Heights, Station Eight-O-Five. In August of 2012, four career members were reassigned from Station Eight-O-Seven, Riverdale Heights, to Station Eight Thirteen, because these stations are only one point three miles apart. In March of 2013, career personnel were redeployed from Sea Pleasant, Eight-O-A, Branchville, Eight-Eleven, Boulevard Heights, Station Eight Seventeen, and West Lanham Hills, Station Eight Twenty-Eight, in order to improve the utilization of staffing resources and maintain fiscal improvements. And in December of 2013, career members were redeployed from Morningside, Station Eight Twenty-Seven, per their request. They are also still a hundred percent volunteer in the Fire Department, delivering excellent service. During the reallocation phase, we did not close fire stations. Chief DeCullen and Chief White will talk a little bit about resources we added and our volunteer coverage to ensure service delivery. Next slide. The staffing reallocations yield a significant downward trend in the number of mandatory holdovers and callback hours personnel worked. A timeframe comparison of last year's period, from June 30th of 2023 through October 5th 2023, to the same timeframe in 2024, there has been a seventy-seven percent reduction in mandatory holdover and callback hours worked by personnel. This drastic reduction improved the health, safety, and wellness of our personnel, as well as improved morale. As you can see on the slide, when you look at June 30th of 2023 and October 5th 2023, it was a little over nineteen thousand mandatory hours in one summer. When you look at 2024, the same timeframe, a little over four thousand hours. The numbers don't lie. Station visits and personnel feedback was positive, to be able to work normal hours and be home with their families. We also saw a significant decrease in overtime hours. Although this was an unintended consequence, it is our goal to come within budget. We currently have an overtime budget of thirty-seven million dollars, and were projected to spend just based on mandatory holdovers and vacancies, well over thirty-nine million. In October, we stated that we would reassess the plan and determine next steps. So we looked at the data. Mandatory hours 2023 to 2024, seventy-seven percent reduction. Overtime spending, trending down and within budget. Response times, as predicted, averaging eight to ten minutes on most calls. Volunteer participation, as predicted, specifically Eight-Forteen, Burwyn Heights, in service eighty-nine percent of the time. Eight-O-Nine, Ladensburg, in service seventy-eight percent of the time. Eight Twelve, College Park, in service a hundred percent of the time. Eight-O-One, Hyattville, in service ninety-five percent of the time. Eight Thirty-Five, Greenbelt, in service thirteen percent of the time, and Eight Thirty-Nine, Luli, in service twenty-four percent of the time. We also looked at, most importantly, our current staffing deficit as of October. Next slide. An updated analysis was conducted to evaluate the status of the department's staffing and our ability to ensure coverage of the minimum staffing positions. Those are positions that require backfill to provide emergency services. Even with the reallocation of career staffing for four firing EMS stations, a considerable staffing deficit continues to exist to cover minimum staffing positions. The department needs one thousand two hundred and twenty-four firefighters to adequately staff the department. We are budgeted for one thousand one hundred and forty-two, leaving a deficit of eighty-two positions to be added to the complement in order to reach our goal of one thousand two hundred and twenty-four. Our current staffing right now is one thousand and four sworn firefighters and paramedics. That's a hundred and thirty-eight personnel to meet the current budgeted complement of one thousand one hundred and forty-two. But to meet where we need to be fully staffed as a department, we need two hundred and twenty personnel to bring us up to a complement of one thousand two hundred and twenty-four. The department has eight hundred and fifty-five minimum staff positions across all shifts. There are only eight hundred and twenty-six personnel operating in these minimum staff positions, creating a deficit of twenty-nine personnel to fill vacancies across all shifts. This deficit does not account for any additional vacancies resulting from personnel using annual, personal, or sick leave, people who are injured on the job, or family medical leave. All of those positions have to be backfilled. Cumulatively, the department backfills an average of forty-five positions per shift. That's a hundred and eighty positions across all the shifts. Sadly, there was no progress in reducing the critical staff shortages with the recent graduation of Career Recruitment School of Sixty-Seven. CRA Sixty-Seven graduated in July with twenty-nine recruits. However, there were twenty-eight separations of sworn employees in the department since May of this year. The department only gained one position from the graduation. Next slide. As a result of this, the reallocation of career staffing from Station Eight Fourteen to Eight Thirty-Five, Eight Thirty-Nine, and Eight Fifty-Five will continue to prevent an increase in the staffing deficit and a subsequent increase in mandatory holdovers and callbacks. Personnel in non-minimum staffing positions such as offices and division assignments will continue to be detailed to cover minimum staffing positions in the Emergency Services Command. To address our operational concerns, we added a third peak unit to Greenbelt, making that a total of two EMS units assigned to Greenbelt and one in Bumper Hill. This placed more EMS resources in Greenbelt than the Greenbelt community than it had before the reallocation of career firefighters and paramedics. And we are utilizing system status management to deploy a fire suppression resource to the area of Burwyn Heights and Greenbelt, and there is no day-one coverage for our volunteers at Station Eight Fourteen. Since October 13th, we have deployed suppression resources to Eight Fourteen's area twelve times. I realize this is not what people wanted to hear, but it is our current reality. We have two choices: we can hold over firefighters and paramedics and access their hours and risk burnout, mistakes, or injuries, and cause them to miss significant occasions with their families at times when they need to care for their loved ones. Or we can redeploy our resource smarter throughout the county to ensure coverage while maintaining reasonable mandatory holdovers and continue to hire firefighters. So I don't propose to speak for you, but I ask the council, which one of you would like to call one of our firefighters and paramedics back to work after they've worked twenty-four hours for multiple fires? That is really our reality every single day. Next slide. So where do we go from here? Our recruit classes. We have launched an aggressive recruitment campaign to hire the firefighters and paramedics that we need. Thanks to this council and our county executive, we were able to raise our complement from nine hundred and ninety-one to one thousand one hundred and forty-two, adding seventy-seven firefighters and will authorize to hire a hundred and fifty recruits this year. The first class, CRA Sixty-Nine, started in September with twenty-nine. We are now down to twenty-one recruits in that class. The next class will start in December with twenty. The last two classes will be launched in June of 2025, for a total of a hundred and fifty recruits. This is the most recruits Prince George's County Fire Department has ever hired in one year. This is not without challenges because we are competing within the region. When we look at DC Fire Department, their starting salary is sixty-three thousand dollars a year. They are fully staffed, they graduated a hundred and forty-seven recruits this year. They have a class in session right now of seventy-five, and they're slated to hire another fifty in the spring of 2025. Anarongo County Fire Department, starting salary fifty-six thousand dollars, graduated a class in October of fifty-seven, they are also fully staffed, and they have a class starting with forty in the spring. To be competitive within the region, our starting salary was raised this October to fifty-four thousand a year, which is still the lowest in the region. Over the next thirty to forty-five days, we will be reevaluating our staffing plan and redeploying resources to the stations as we can. As students graduate and personnel become available, we will be going back into some of these stations. We don't want to remain in this posture. It is our goal to staff as many stations as needed to deliver the best services we can to our community. Thank you for your time, and would now like to turn the presentation over to Steve Knight, our professional associate, to discuss our strategic plan and performance time. And Steve, be quick.
Thank you for the opportunity to come forward and share a little bit about the study that we partnered with the Fire Department on about a year, year and a half ago now. And it was a series of reports we produced, so as the chief's presentation alluded to, it's very data-driven, data-centered. We built a quantitative data report, the GIS assessment, community risk assessment, measured the risk across all the station areas, and then ultimately a document called the standard cover and strategic plan to help the Fire Department as a whole. So for the sake of time and to move it along and try to meet the time commitment, if you don't mind, I'm gonna try to skip ahead to a couple elements that are pretty important to segue with the chief's presentation about some of the challenges that we found as an independent auditor of the system that we looked at. So there's a few measures, we call them the system of measures, that we look at when we look at fire departments and any of those systems and deployment designs. One of those is reliability, and just a brief definition of that is how often is a unit that is assigned to a specific fire station or zone actually available and able to respond to a call in that zone when it occurs? And overall, only two of your stations were over ninety percent of the time that they were available. So if you think about the design in a whole, it's predicated that units are actually available and able to respond when incidences come in. So that's the first element. Next one is simultaneity, or call concurrency. And what this really looks at is how often does a call occur, and while that call is still going on, the first call, a second or greater call occurs. What we found there is the simultaneity is actually quite high, twenty-three of the stations had a call concurrency of greater than thirty percent, which means only seventy percent of the time it could, a unit go and handle that call and go available and mitigate the incident before a second or greater call occurred. Using Eight Twenty-Five as an example, more than sixty percent of the time when a call occurred in that area, a second or greater call will occur at the same time. So what we found at the high level of thirty thousand foot per feet is that the system is really busy, but there's actually a depth problem in how many resources are assigned to the stations that contribute the most, and we'll talk about that in a couple minutes. One of the major findings, and this is really a compliment to the chief's presentation about taking care of the people, workload specifically is measured in our report as a unit hour utilization, and it measures all of the time on task that employees work. The industry threshold for twenty-four hour shifts is at point three or thirty percent of the time, which, you know, if I just use rough numbers, that's about seven to eight hours a day on 911-related activity. The rest of the twenty-four hour shift is for nine non-911-related activities, such as management-directed activities, training, fire prevention, all the other things that we prefer that's not specifically related to a 911 call. What we found is, and you can see the graph with the line there, is that eighteen of the transport-capable units, and this is probably worse today than when we did the report about a year and a half ago, eighteen of the transport-capable units had, were past the recommended threshold for workload of thirty percent, and some of your VLS units as well were between forty-four, fifty-one percent, which is excessively above the thirty percent threshold. And then another twenty-eight units that were transport-capable were already above what we term as the planning threshold. Understanding that the policy and budget cycle may take several years in order to find remedy, the twenty-five percent threshold is going to introduce another twenty-eight. So the system is in a lot of stress, and that contributes to the overall capability to respond and respond in a time and a hand. So in that, the current, we'll just focus on travel time for the moment, but the travel time is when the units are actually dispatched, they say that they're en route until they arrive on scene. The performance in '22 was eight point eight minutes, or almost nine minutes for all the career stations, and as a total with all the combination of volunteer, et cetera, was right around eight, eight and a half minutes. But your ambulances specifically were closer to ten minutes because they're a limited resource in your system and the highest call volume associated with human-related activity. So you can see that when we look at that system of measures, the impact of not being available when a call comes in, the impact of having multiple calls occur at the same time, and being restricted on your resources elongates the response time that the citizens are experiencing because units aren't actually available in the stations that you've already specified. So a real high level on response time. If we talked about, and if you want to refer to the slides later or have any questions, we'd be happy to follow up with that. But the literature really speaks to having a response time can really make a significant difference in medical terminology for incidents with a high-risk mortality. If you can get there in, say, five minutes or less, that's really where the evidence-based research has coalesced. The guiding national standard, which is on your screen here, is NFPA seventeen-ten for urban environments, recommends a four-minute travel time at a ninety percent level to get there. That's a very difficult benchmark to hit, and most agencies aren't able to. We calculated in your system, you would have to increase to seventy-nine stations if you wanted to meet that. So the takeaway from that that I want to share on the next slide is that we looked at a lot of other metro departments that are urban across the country, and you can see that the vast majority of those, at least in this sample, are all between five and nine minutes, with the vast majority around eight to nine minutes. So what that tells us is if you can't, if you can't afford or you don't have the desire to purchase down to, say, four minutes, then you've got flexibility from the policy perspective to adopt a performance standard that makes the most sense, that balances that struggle that you have between how much protection can I afford or my desire to purchase, and how much risk am I willing to assume as a community? So the staffing challenges, the chief went through, I do want to point out, and this is an interesting element when you talk about return on investment for policy choices. When we looked at just the career stations, so we had twenty-nine of the career stations at the time, they could cover approximately eighty percent of all the calls within the system just for career stations. But when you talk about level of investment, just for illustrative purposes only, if every station costs a million dollars, what we're really trying to share on this is the first twenty-nine stations can cover eighty percent of all the incidents that you have in the system from those twenty-nine stations. The next seventeen stations would only improve that by eleven percent. So you see there's a diminishing return. Sooner or later, you get into the right mix of saturation of number of stations, and the challenge from there is more so about the depth of resources and the number of staffing that you have in order to deploy the resources that you need, not necessarily additional fire stations. Does that make sense? Okay. So another element that we looked at in order to at least posit some items on how you could address some of the staffing challenges, we looked at the shift schedules as well, and what we looked at on those is if you, as you migrate from, say, a forty-two-hour work week to a forty-eight-hour work week, to a fifty-four to a fifty-six, those are common schedules all across the industry for twenty-four-hour, forty-eight-hour base, you know, firefighter schedules. We understand that that is a collective bargaining element, and we would have to negotiate and have a labor management solution, but as you can see, if you look across there, for example, if you moved from a forty-two-hour work week to a forty-eight-hour work week, that would be about a seventeen million dollar investment, and move the pendulum down from two-hundred-and-sixty-one vacancies that we calculated a year and a half ago, if you're in a better position today, up down to only a hundred and twenty-five vacancies from the two-hundred-and-sixty-one. So you can see the level of impact that the schedule has. So if there's any palette to have any negotiated position in middle ground on that, there's some excellent movement that's in the actual benefits pay and working conditions. So last piece I'll end on and then kind of sum it up is, when we talk about being resource constrained, if you look at all of the yellow and green columns there, that's the demand for service, is how often people are calling 911 throughout the day. It starts at Sunday at the first peak, it goes Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, all the way through Saturday. All of the blue area is a geographic requirement that you need in order for you to arrive at eight minutes as the system could be designed. What this shows is the totality of all the EMS units, that red line is your staffing, is underneath the combination of the demand for services and your geographic requirement in order to be there at eight minutes. So you're under-resourced overall. The second layer on that is your system breaks out the calls by severity, which is a good best practice, where ALS or high-acute EMS events gets an advanced life support truck, and lower-acute basic life support gets a VLS truck. This graph here shows you that your ALS component is significantly understaffed for the demand that the community has for advanced life support services, and then your basic life support is nearly equally as challenged. Some of those day crews provide a much better deployment on that. If you see those kind of peaks on the red, they're covering about half of the day, and then the rest of the peak period, you're upside down. And then the rest of the peak period, you're upside down on resources where you're challenged on your resource allocation. So we did put together several high-level alternatives to look at how to shore up EMS system. They included different varieties of alternatives of additional twenty-four-hour trucks, introducing twelve-hour trucks. We also looked at a single role system where you might just hire EMTs and paramedics that aren't cross-trained on EMS arms. And then on top of that, we looked at also outsourcing, which is a viable opportunity with some of your staffing shortages and challenges is what other communities have done, is outsource the lower-acuity EMS work, and then you can reallocate some of those personnel to help shore up some of your challenges. So the last slide is really just the key takeaways of the summary of that. And I'll just read the, read the titles and then be available for questions. But really just wanted to highlight that the system resiliency is quite challenged because of how busy you are, and the workload is a major component for the employee aspect of that. And I will point out that the really high workload, I just want this to be clear. The high workload is when the, when the personnel are actually on duty and working. What the chief was describing about holding them over for even extended periods after twenty-four hours actually exacerbates the problem because the call volume for the community isn't going away. So if we thought the workload was way too high for the first twenty-four hours, it's going to be especially way too high for another twelve or twenty-four hours. Next piece is identifying adopting response time objectives, realigning the number of fire stations and performance objectives, staffing challenges, EMS challenges and alternatives. And the last piece is aligned with that, and that's outsourcing options. So with that, I'll end it and be available for questions.
Thank you very much. I think that we're going to go to...
Chief White, if you can go to slide thirty-six. I'm briefly going to go over the four impacted stations and give you a perspective of the call volume during the period of June thirtieth to November ninth, and a cumulative response, average response time for those areas. Talk about understanding of the peak units and some of the things we put into place. So I'll start with company eight fourteen. From June thirtieth through November ninth, there were a total of seven-hundred-and-eighty responses. Average response time was six minutes and four seconds. The majority of those calls are EMS-related, categorized as VLS. Next slide. Company eight thirty-five, Greenbelt, first due same time period, seven-hundred-and-twenty-two incident responses. The average response time was six minutes and three seconds. Majority of those calls are, once again, EMS-related. The majority of those calls EMS or VLS-related. Now, I want to take some time real quick to go over, I know during the time period, the city of Greenbelt had brought to our attention a couple of noticeable incidents questioning the response times. We take that very seriously, so we review them. The three of them are on the screens, twenty-two Ridge Road for a fire alarm. The request was to investigate why it took twenty minutes for a unit to respond. When we investigated it, we realized that the unit parked up and took four minutes to leave the firehouse. It took them fourteen minutes to arrive. After investigating that, disciplinary action was taken against those crew members because they did not follow department procedures. They are to respond on automatic fire alarms. That was the nature of the call. There was some remedial training and that was addressed. Garden Way, which was presented as a nine-one-one, nine-one-one call for an anaphylactic shock patient that ended up in the result of a cardiac arrest patient. The arriving first unit was truck eight fourteen from the Berwyn Heights Firehouse that arrived just under five minutes as the first responding unit. And medic eight twelve from our College Park Fire Station, which is an ALS resource, arrived under nine minutes. This patient was transported to a local hospital, but unfortunately succumbed to their illnesses. And the last one was Ridge Road for a pedestrian struck. The first arriving unit was truck eight fourteen. One of the things was, was truck eight fourteen there. We actually investigated this matter by using our ABL tracking. This allowed us to look at what time the unit arrived and where it was located. The truck was actually parked on the side road. It was the first responder. They arrived under five minutes to this location as well. And also, the first EMS unit actually was the unit, peak unit, assigned to the Greenbelt Station eight thirty-five, which was a paramedic ambulance, eight-five-eight. And they ended up transporting the patient to the hospital for a checkup for non-life-threatening injuries. Our next slide. Company eight thirty-nine, which is Bowie Bel Air, same time. Total called responses, one-thousand-six-hundred unit responses, with an average response time of eight minutes and twenty-nine minutes. The majority of these calls are EMS, unlike the other four. The predominant EMS category call type at Bowie is ALS. Next slide. And lastly, our Bunker Hill Firehouse, company eight fifty-five, for the same period, had eight-hundred-and-twenty-three unit responses or incidents. The average response time was six minutes and thirty-seven seconds. Everyone asked the question, how do we manage the resources? Obviously, with the Fitch Group and all that, we manage our resources by using some dynamic unit placement. You hear the term Live Mum, which is a software. Our duty chiefs, which we have four of them on duty twenty-four hours a day, manage moving resources around. I can tell you today that the duty chief on duty has probably moved units about five or six times today. That's a normal basis. So normally, when we reach about twenty-five calls an hour, which is when we start really demanding the service, we are shuffling units. This is where our community members start to realize, hey, why isn't ambulance from Chapel Oaks running calls at Laurel? They're now no longer just community resources, they're county resources. And we move them where the demand is. We have peak units in service as well. We placed an ALS resource at the Greenbelt Firehouse originally, and just recently replaced it VLS units. So there are two EMS units at the Greenbelt Station. And then we have a basic life support ambulance at the Bunker Hill Firehouse. We also did a service enhancement in Bowie. We also placed in service on July first of this year, a paramedic engine at the old Bowie Station to enhance the ALS service delivery to Bowie.
So I, we're going to hear from our volunteers. I know you're going to hear a lot of the passion. What my office does basically is coordinate, work with volunteer leadership, get the resources they need. Obviously, we've heard a lot about the hiring, a lot of the career positions on the volunteer. On the volunteer side, we recently hired a, well, last year, a pleasure to be able to hire a full-time recruiter that assisted us with increasing the volunteer applications, worked through some issues with the volunteer application process, really bringing some more volunteers into the system. Year-to-date, we're at four-hundred-and-sixty-one applications so far this year. And it strictly relies on a lot of our volunteer, as the chief mentioned earlier, heavy volunteer corporations, the amount of effort that they put in. And we definitely would lend to some of the, some of the decisions to which stations were reallocated. So we thank them for their, for their effort. And I know just want to get to the...
We can also reflect to our points also on the map at the time. So officially, this concludes our full presentation. As you heard today, there are no easy answers. Our staffing problems do not start overnight, and they cannot be fixed in one budget or high-end cycle. To see the effects of one recruit in this department takes a total of eighteen months from the announcement of graduation. We're working diligently with our J.R. ends or more recruits as fast as possible to get them out to the field. At the same time, we are sure we are hiring the white people, people who care about our community and want to be a part of this department. Our recruitment efforts are not just centered around career firefighters. We realize our volunteer departments need help, and we need them. We have a few strong lines of departments that are serving our community and community. We want to support them. We also have more than half of our volunteer corporations that are not doing well, but we are committed to helping them with recruitment and retention efforts that the chief White talked about. I look forward to more conversations with you as well as our community. And we'll end our presentation so that you can answer the questions.
Thank you so much. That was thorough. And I wanted to remind everybody that we do have decorum rules here in the council. And what that means is when it's your turn to speak, you'll come up. You'll speak for no more than two minutes in this hearing. And no one may clap, cheer, or in any other way make noise. Just be quiet, kind of like kids are at school. We're really on the track. So I, like, similar to me in the library, the vice chair said. If we could call up first Grant Walker. Two minutes, please, remember.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Council Chair Ivy and esteemed members of this council. My name is Grant Walker. I am the president of the Professional Firefighters of Maryland, Prince George County. And I have the distinct honor of representing nearly eighteen-hundred active and retired members of the Prince George County Fire and EMS Department. Before I begin my remarks, I'd like to acknowledge the active and retired members in attendance tonight to this town hall and the work they do on behalf of the residents of Prince George County. I want to thank the communities of Greenbelt and Beltsville for advocating for our firefighters in Prince George County. It's appreciated that they are acknowledging that our members are the ones providing fire and EMS service in the communities and the council for their continued advocacy for our response in Prince George County. I want to address the concerns we have in the data presented here tonight by the representatives from Fitch and Associates and the Fire and EMS Department. Respectfully, the data presented here today does not reflect the true story of the current state of affairs in the county. The data presented by Fitch and Associates is based on the Commission of Fire Accreditation International Model and not the National Consensus Standard. The standard on fire EMS response in the U.S. is the National Fire Protection Association's seventeen-ten standard. The NFPA is considered the industry standard in all areas of the fire service. And in Prince George County, we use the NFPA Building and Life Safety Code, the NFPA standard on gear, apparatus, and employee physicals. The NFPA seventeen-ten response standard says the first on-scene unit should be there in four minutes, not eight. Prince George County meets this standard thirty percent of the time. Not a single ladder truck is staffed, there are not enough ambulances in this system. Why are we completely disregarding the NFPA seventeen-ten when it comes to fire response standards? Why is it that the one standard that dictates that enough firefighters show on a scene in a fast enough amount of time to mitigate your emergency is the only one being disregarded? The data shows that from 2019 to 2023, Prince George County responses times have increased by sixteen percent. When seconds count, this increase is shocking. What Fitch and Associates fails to mention in their presentation is that their solutions to fixing the known problem is caused by under-resourcing and under-hiring in the fire department on the backs of our firefighters working more hours and by making their hours longer and by outsourcing their work. The answer here is simple. There's not enough personnel in this system to actually meet the NFPA standard. It's evident in just the need of this town hall to discuss. We are short-staffed, and we've had to have personnel pulled out of fire stations so they could go home at the end of a shift. In the last five years, overtime has increased by twenty-two million dollars, more than double of what it was in 2018. We're paying enough in overtime to employ four-hundred-and-forty-six firefighters with their salaries plus fringe. It's no secret that this council has supported the fire department, and we failed to hire enough personnel to meet our attrition needs and growth. We've lost two firefighters this week to the District of Columbia and twenty-seven since July. There's been no progress on the hiring front.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate the support of the council.
Yes, and I'm not sure if there's someone from the volunteer leadership here. Okay, I will go to, oh, there is, okay. Thank you. After that, just be prepared, we'll have Danielle Carter and Tekeisha James.
Good evening, council members. My name is Donald Wells. I'm the president of the Prince George County Volunteer Fire Rescue Association. Also, I'm a member of the county, a lifelong member of Leibesburg Fire Department, representing the thirty-six corporations in the county. We do represent the first volunteer company that, volunteer company established in eighteen-eight-seven. I appreciate the fact that they're trying to hire more personnel. That is great. Right now, the volunteer service, we had nine-hundred-and-thirty volunteers, nine-hundred-and-thirty fit test volunteers this year. Two years ago, we had almost, we had a thousand fifty-four according to fit test estimates. We do provide almost a hundred million dollars in between buildings and apparatus and equipment and other variations. Sometimes we feel like we're left out of the loop. Sometimes when it comes to the movement, we're left out of the loop. At the time of the implementation, the movement that took place, the training standard was put into place. This council approved a CB eighty-three, twenty-twenty-three. And on the back of that, the training standard was put in with a, with a quick implementation, which in turn has caused a lot of UAS times. An example of that, the other day, Westland Hills had four volunteers, but couldn't get out the door for ten days straight because they didn't have somebody to meet the criteria to get in the front seat by today's standard. Yet they had people that had been riding in that same position for years. The TLA is supposed to be where, if we were going to TLA, the Training and Learning Academy, the Prince George County does not support the county volunteers right this minute. They're working on that. But as of today, they do not have the classes to support the training standards that they're trying to implement, including as of July, as of January one, twenty-twenty-five. So we're looking for a little bit shorter times there because we will not have personnel to reach those benchmarks. The last thing I have is the Beltsville Volunteer Fire Department. At 2013, there's trailers being, talking about being placed for a split building that has no ducts. I'm trying to understand why. Why wouldn't you give the personnel when there's no ducts for nobody to count and count by? I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Let's see. Marlon Sullman. Danielle Carter. Then Danielle Carter's with the Mount Rainier State Council. Tekeisha James has been here of Leibesburg.
Thank you. I'm here to the council, I'm editor-in-chief. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Danielle Carter. I am a current council member in Mount Rainier. I'm also a former EMT volunteer with Pigeon County. With over eighty percent of county's calls for service or nine-one-one calls being medical in nature, I have always struggled to understand why Prince George County did not hire more basic EMTs. I have been told that it has something to do with firing unions and pay scales, but basic EMTs don't care because they're not firemen. If I may, to put someone through an accelerated EMT basic class, it takes eight weeks. To prepare and take national boards could take no more than another month or so. And that means you could feasibly have an entire class of basics on the street and helping load up the current staff in four to five months' time, not eighteen months. For every problem, there is a solution. And this problem, as I have seen for over a decade here, is a need for more EMTs here in Pigeon County. An ambulance only has to only have one paramedic in order to be considered an ALS unit. Every ALS unit also provides VLS services. To staff each ambulance with a paramedic and basic automatically extends the number of medic units in the county. If you hired EMT basics who are not firemen, then you have now extended the number of engine units available by not having to have firemen on every ambulance. There truly is no downside to hiring an EMT only. I deeply respect our fire services, both career and volunteer, and it pains me deeply to see both of them going through what they're going through. These men and women are going through more than anyone on this council or in this audience can even fathom. What they see and take home with them are things that none of you would ever want to. The county needs to not worry about building new stations or buying new boats. Instead, they need to shore up their resources and have, you can hire, say, forty new EMTs and still have money left over to hire thirty-nine new firemen. Again, as a former EMT only, I implore you to consider this as a solution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mayor James. And then, Mayor, the mayor.
Good evening, Chair Ivy and members of the Prince George County Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. As you stated, my name is Mayor Tekeisha James, and I serve the town of Leibesburg. And I'm here to express our deep concerns regarding the recent staffing reallocation plan, which is impacting fire departments across the county, specifically the reductions most recently affecting Greenbelt and stations like it. Our communities rely on the partnership between our career and volunteer firefighters. And the town of Leibesburg has been fortunate, as you've clearly stated, to have a dedicated and excellent volunteer fire department in Leibesburg. But continued staffing cuts, such as those in Greenbelt and other stations, continue to play significant strain on our resources and ultimately weaken our essential emergency services that our Prince George County residents rely on. The impact of these cuts is felt not only within Greenbelt, but also with it reverberates through neighboring towns such as Leibesburg, stretching the capabilities of our volunteer teams and creating potential response delays. stretching the capabilities of our volunteer teams and creating potential response delays as we heard about tonight. We understand the financial challenges the county is facing, and we appreciate the council's efforts to navigate these constraints. However, we urge a more significant commitment toward collaborating with volunteer agencies to create sustainable staffing solutions that won't jeopardize public safety. Rather than implementing further reductions, let's work together to activate the right partnerships and create the right plans that both address our physical needs but also maintain a robust emergency response capability for all of our communities. I stand in solidarity with residents, councils, and the mayor of Greenbelt and assure you the town of Leibensburg is ready to participate fully in discussions and strategies aimed at securing the safety and well-being of our residents. I want to thank Chief Green, Deputy Chief McClellan, and Assistant Chief White for their continued discussions and efforts in coming up with the right solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah Kabir, and then Jenny Pompey of the council in Greenbelt.
Good evening Chair Ivy and members of the council. My name is Leslie Kabir, I have the district privilege of serving as the mayor of the City of College Park. Today, I'm here to express our communities' deep concern and frustration over the staffing cuts affecting our local departments, removing fresh on staff from our key stations, which the communities at risk. Our two fire stations in College Park are now facing increased pressure and taking on additional calls that our neighboring stations previously handled. This has caused longer response times and diminished service levels for residents. We were initially told that this decision was temporary, but now we're hearing that this will be permanent one. What happened at Branson Fire Station about twelve years ago is happening now at these stations. Branson still doesn't have any professional staff. Back in June, we made several patch in College Park, Lawrence Heights, and City of Greenbelt. Together, we made several requests to address this crisis. Request number one, we asked for, asked to form a task force of municipal leaders, fire personnel, and county commissioners to develop a sustainable staffing plan. Number two, we requested detailed response time data to inform better decision-making process. But we have, we have received none. We were only given very high-level average response time data, we do not have the individual call data, nor do we have, nor do we know how many of them needed more than the standard response time. Other departments, including the county's own police department, PG PD, share call data publicly on their, on their websites, on the portal, without detailed location data, which is okay. And one of the fire departments also publishes the data publicly on their, on the portal, but our fire department has, without this critical information. Now, this has eroded communities' trust in your work and your department. Number three, we ask for more support and incentives for volunteer firefighters and have more robust recruitment process. And finally, we ask for community engagement, more community meetings. And this decision came from Chief Green's office, but he or she never actually came to our office, our community, to talk about it. Thank you for having me and, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Council member Jennifer Pompey.
Hi, my name is Jenny Pompey and I'm here on behalf of the City of Greenbelt City Council. I would like to extend our sincere thanks to the county council for convening this long overdue hearing and giving our communities a chance to engage in a public dialogue with the fire chief regarding the EMS staff allocation plan. At the heart of our concerns is a persistent and worsening shortage of fire and EMS staffing and a budget that has been insufficient to meet the communities' needs. The staffing is further aggravated by rapid new development without corresponding infrastructure, particularly in public safety. Unfortunately, it is our long-established communities like Greenbelt, Berwyn Heights, and College Parks, Park, that are now most impacted by the shortfall. These communities, which have historically invested in their local fire stations, are now left with decreased service levels while newer developments are still medically supported by public safety services. We are grateful for the two P EMS units that have been assigned to Greenbelt in response to our concerns. We believe that they have been truly instrumental in saving lives, not only in Greenbelt, but in the surrounding areas. In fact, these units may represent more medical services than we had available under the original staffing plan, but the community still requires a comprehensive, stable solution for all emergency services. Our community deserves reliable, timely emergency response, and we are failing to meet these expectations under the current system and what was supposed to be a temporary plan. We will renew our calls for data transparency, regular community engagement, immediate plan adjustments, and the creation of a task force. The current temporary staffing plan relies heavily on volunteer firefighters to fill the gaps led by the reassignment of career firefighters from Greenbelt, Bowie Villaree, Bunker Hill, and Berwyn Heights. The reliance is unsustainable, and our volunteers are reaching a point of burnout. Without a clear plan to reinstate career firefighters or provide relief, the effectiveness of our emergency response will deteriorate. What will happen when our volunteers can no longer meet these demands? We urge the county council and the fire department to respond to these concerns with immediate action and work with the communities to find collaborative solutions. The safety and trust of our communities depends on it. Thank you again for this opportunity to speak on behalf of the city of Greenbelt.
Thank you so much. We have the mayor of Berwyn Heights, Tiffany Papanikolas.
Thank you very much Chair and Council, I'd like to start off, first of all, by thanking our council member, Eric Olson, for his unwavering support on this matter, along with Ingrid Watson and Thomas Turnogah. They've been very supportive. Our response times have increased by nearly two minutes on average during this reallocation plan. In lifefailing situations, those two minutes can be the difference between life and death. This increase in response times is not only concerning, but it's unacceptable for our residents who expect and deserve prompt emergency care. We understand that eight minutes is acceptable as a standard to our police, or our fire chief. However, mediocrity should never be the goal, excellence should be. While overtime for the county's career firefighters has decreased under this plan, the system relies heavily on volunteers, as the Fitch report even said. The response times for volunteers was faster than the career, but the best was a combination when both are working together. We deeply appreciate our volunteers, but the demands on our emergency services are rising, and we cannot continue to ask them to fill this growing gap indefinitely without more support from the career staff. This brings me to our specific requests, which we believe are crucial to finding a solution that meets all of our communities' needs. First, we would like full transparency in the data that informed the decision to change the staffing plan, as well as the ongoing changes and the ongoing discussions. Clear and shared CAD data allows us to better understand the reasoning behind these decisions and assess the true impact on our response capabilities. Second, we are asking for a task, a task force and a more collaborative approach. We believe that all stakeholders, including our municipal leaders, emergency services personnel, and community representatives, should all have a seat at the table whenever large-scale changes to emergency services are considered. These decisions affect all of us, and only by working together can we find solutions that are fair and effective. And lastly, we are committed to finding middle ground on this challenging issue. We recognize that staffing is a complex and difficult topic, but we are committed to working with the county to find a creative solution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I did want to acknowledge Delkan Ashanti Martinez. I saw him, you didn't sign up to speak, but I just want to acknowledge you. Next, we have Valerie Solinsky. And then, Nada Smith-Buschiers.
Thank you, council, thank you firefighters, thank you community members. My name is Valerie Solinsky, I live in Mount Rainier, which is the Station Fifty-Five first D area. I'm just a regular person, I'm not elected or anything, but my dad was the fire chief, so. I was also not able to get the right information, all the data points needed, but I was able to get some under the staffing, and I found in my, my area, structured fires, medical calls, motor vehicle accidents with fatalities. I found response times of ten, fourteen, fifteen minutes. Responders came from Heightsville, Chilum, Chapel Oaks, Leibensburg, Glendale, Land River Hills, College Park, Riverdale, Beltsville, Kentlands, and Silver Spring. In Brantwood, a man died waiting eighteen minutes for medical attention. These are old houses, they're wood, a lot of them. They're on roads that are narrow, heavily trafficked, predated planning. It feels to me like all these new developments are, are taking on firefighters at our expense. We just voted asking to approve bonds to build more firehouses, but we can't staff the ones we have. What about the people that have, have been here and committed? Why are the new recruits not being directed to these places, these, our firefighters? Our stations. The National Fire Academy is in Maryland. We're less than five miles from the College Park Fire Academy. How do we resolve this? I, I agree with the previous speakers who mentioned, we need to be involved. We, we don't just get letters and proclamations of this is how it's gonna be and out of the blue. But what about apprenticeship programs, what about exchange programs? What about the fast-track EMS EMT that someone mentioned? Giving the volunteer companies the tools and trainings and certifications they need? Enhance a virtual aid, we're closer to DC. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Solinsky. Nada Smith-Buschiers, and Daniel Donahue.
Hello. My name is Lee Nada Smith-Buschiers, and I'm the president of the Greater Acakeek Civic Association. County elected officials. It has come to my attention that there are concerns with Prince George's County Fire, EMS Department, and volunteer fire service. Specifically, I am concerned about what is going on with my local department, the Acakeek Volunteer Fire Department. I am asking you to assist Acakeek in the following ways. Purchasing the computer terminal for the Acakeek Volunteer Fire Department command vehicle, for which I understand the department paid eight thousand dollars to PG County over ten months ago. Getting approval from the county fire chief to purchase a tanker to transport water to the Moyon Reserve and other areas of Acakeek in case of a fire. The Moyon Reserve and other areas of Acakeek do not have fire hydrants or access to WSSC water sources. So, the pumper is an essential need for the volunteer fire department. The estimated cost is between six hundred thousand and eight hundred thousand, and I understand Acakeek Volunteer Fire Department has the funding to purchase it. County taxpayers will incur no cost, so I don't understand why the request has not been approved. Getting approval from the county fire chief to purchase the new ambulance for about three hundred thousand dollars. It will replace the twenty-eighteen, or act as a backup, the twenty-eighteen will act as a backup. Confirming the use of the Acakeek Volunteer Event Hall as a warming and emergency shelter unit. Thank you for representing the needs and best interests of all surrounding communities with the Acakeek Volunteer Fire Department serves and any assistance it provides for its fellow fire departments.
Thank you very much. Daniel Donahue, and then Kimberly Potts.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak about my concerns, concerns related to Prince George's County volunteer firefighters, and more specifically, the Acakeek Volunteer Fire Department. My name is Daniel Donahue, my address is one six four oh one Old Marshall Hall Road, Acakeek, Maryland. I've ever been the same farm that I grew up on in Acakeek, attended Prince George's County Public Schools for all twelve years, and I'm a veteran. I've been active in the Greater Acakeek Civic Association, Prince George's County Farm Bureau, Forestry Board, and I'm a Prince George's County Board Member at the Southern Maryland Agriculture Development Commission. I wish to address the sad state of affairs between the Prince George's County Fire Department and all the volunteer fire departments in the county, as reported in meetings held by the Greater Acakeek Civic Association addressing volunteers' concerns. It has been brought to my attention that the fire chief of the Prince George's County Fire Department does not respond to administrative questions submitted by the Acakeek Volunteer Fire Department and will not allow them to purchase a tanker truck using funds they have raised unless it is a pumper tanker. They need a tanker truck due to large parts of the Acakeek area not feeling with the Washington Suburban Sanitary Commission public water system. There was a structured fire on Old Marshall Hall Road in Acakeek in December twenty fifteen, and with the fire departments that responded ran hoses approximately two tenths of a mile from a WSSC fire hydrant to the fire scene, there was no water coming out of the hoses. I remember seeing two of the fire departments were from Charles County. Afterwards, at a community meeting, no one could explain why the hydrant had no water. That is a failure on the part of county government and its mission to protect the citizens and their property. The Acakeek Volunteer Fire Department has requested to purchase a second ambulance with their own funds and to keep the current one as a reserve ambulance. It is my understanding that they have received pushback from the chief of the Prince George's County Fire Department. My father Frank Donahue was president of the Acakeek Volunteer Fire Department in the fifties and pushed for them to purchase his first ambulance, the World War II Buick Surplus, the first ambulance in the southwestern quadrant of the county. The chief of the Prince George's County Fire Department needs to allow the ambulance purchase. Both the ambulance and the pumper truck.
Mr. Donahue, I've let you go over your time.
I'm sorry.
I, I really wanted to hear it all, but I'll have to get it in writing.
You've answered it already.
Oh, okay. Okay, Kimberly Potts?
Yes.
And then it will be Kim Rea.
Good evening council. My name is Kimberly Potts and I'm the community director of Greenwich House Apartments, a senior building located in the city of Greenbelt and owned by the city of Greenbelt. I'm here today to speak on behalf of our residents and to express a serious concern that is impacting their safety and well-being. The loss of our local career fire personnel at Station Eight Thirty-Five leaves our seniors feeling less secure, and it undermines the peace of mind we all should be able to rely on. Prior to the loss of our local career fire personnel, we enjoyed rapid response times, often within just a few minutes, which provided a crucial sense of security for our vulnerable population. Greenbelt is a unique city, addresses can be difficult to find if you're not familiar with the area. Neighboring fire departments with career personnel unfamiliar with our community face challenges navigating our streets and buildings, further delaying their response. When every second counts, slow response times can mean the difference between life and death. For those individuals who are making these decisions to remove our local career fire personnel, I ask you to consider this. On September twenty-third at ten twenty-four, a call arrived at Central Station, our monitor and company, regarding an emergency at Greenwich House. Firework dispatched at ten twenty-six, the fire department finally arrived on scene at ten forty-one, resulting in a total response time of fifteen minutes. According to the information provided to Greenbelt News Review by Prince George's County Fire Department, published on October twenty-fourth, the average response time for a fire response in twenty twenty-four is four minutes and twenty-two seconds. The response time to Greenwich House was more than three times that amount. We are fortunate that this time it was not an actual fire, but a piece of equipment that failed. However, this incident serves as a stark reminder of the critical need for a reliable local emergency services to safeguard our community. Our seniors deserve to feel safe in their homes, but right now, they no longer have that same sense of security they once did. The ripple effect of this decision reaches beyond just our building, it impacts the entire community of Greenbelt. The absence of local career fire personnel weakens the safety net we all depend on. I urge you to consider the critical importance of local fire services and the devastating impact their absence has on our most vulnerable among us.
Thank you so much, appreciate you. Is it Marcia Sims? Pardon me? Oh, I'm sorry, Kim Rea somehow got it done.
So, I'm not a politician, I'm just a regular citizen.
You're a favorite.
And I've lived in Beltsville pretty much my entire life, my grandfather helped build that station. I have had more relatives in that station than probably that haven't been in that station. And one thing I would really like to say is it was really nice to hear Chief Green say that she wants to work with the volunteers, because she hasn't. She hasn't been working with the volunteers, anyway, she's been holding them back, and she has been doing everything she can to not allow them to run calls, they make everything more difficult, they've alluded to this several times. She also tried to get the Beltsville Fire Station to sign over, basically sign over their property should they not meet the, there was no reason for the contract, there's nothing wrong with the building. There's nothing wrong with the building, but she still wanted them to say that they were gonna sign over their building to her. And there's still, to my knowledge, at least a month ago, she was still trying to bully them into signing this piece of paper. She has not worked with our volunteers. She does not stand for our volunteers, and we definitely need somebody who does. Back.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Marcia Downs? And then Hannah Bedford-Dillo.
Good evening, my name is Marcia Downs, and I'm a resident of Greeneridge House Apartments located in the city of Greenville. I'm also a participant in Prince George's County's fire EMS project identification. I'm here to express my deep concern over losing our local career fire personnel. Since we are a senior facility, we count on timely responses to emergencies to avoid possible damage to property and loss of life. I was home the morning of September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, when fire alarms were sounded. The delayed response time, only one small fire truck, and limited emergency personnel, in my opinion, was definitely a failure. Greeneridge House residents and the project ID program, these are residents needing assistance evacuating the building, were left in their apartments with no help to safety. While this emergency turned out to be an equipment failure, it was truly an eye-opener to what could have happened. The senior residents at Greeneridge House and our Greenville community deserve to have a sense of security and safety. So please, consider the importance of our local fire services. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for yours. Melissa, oh, Hannah Bedford-Dillo.
Good evening, I'm Hannah Bedford-Dillo. I'm the managing editor of the Greenville News Review, and I'm not here to speak in favor or against of the staffing plan, but for public access to information about it. Fire Chief Tiffany Green repeatedly referred to data and analysis that informed the decision to withdraw the career fire funds from four stations, yet she didn't share it. The Greenville News Review submitted a Public Information Act, or PIA, request, and in response to that, received a PowerPoint. We did not get any narrative analysis. We did not get a key. We're not told what the highlighting means. And the questions that we had about it, Mr. Doubleay said that we needed to work with the PIA office. The PIA office said they'd given us the document we had to address, Mr. Doubleay, and so we didn't get any answers. Since the Greenville News Review has also submitted PIA requests for three specific incidences, these are requests that are onerous or take hours of sifting through data. They're just requests for the single reports that can be provided with patient information redacted. This morning at eleven fifteen AM, I got the first of those after a forty-two day wait and mention of it on the front page of the paper. There's another request that I submitted over thirty days ago, so the department is violating that thirty-day requirement of the Act Two. So I suggest that if the county stands behind the decisions, the public sharing of information will be to its benefit to share the rationale and help build public trust. However, complying with information requests is not just best practice, it's legally required. So I'm here to ask for cooperation and communication, transparency, public information, and at the very least, compliance with the Maryland Public Information Act. Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah. Melissa in Herobrine. And then Daniel Seibert.
Good evening, my name is Melissa M. Herobrine. I'm a resident of Greenville, Maryland. I'd like to thank the county council for hosting this hearing at long last. I hope that we could discuss this in July after three cities sued to stop the action to remove all of our career firefighters from our station. I don't want to repeat what's already been said. I do want to put a focus on transparency, and as county council members, I always want to say how frustrating it's been for residents to not have the information that they really need to have. And I think one of the things that you will hear and you have heard is that all of us are linked together, and we all deserve this information, this data is ours. And I really honestly would like to have data to understand incident response times, but also to understand deaths, to understand the recruitment of volunteers, which should be information that we can provide at least monthly for the public, information on how close we are for veterans to retire from the force or where we're losing people. This is just basic information that you need to actually monitor this county and services to your constituents. And finally, I just wanted to say that our community is ready to rally behind, right? We're ready to work with other people. We're ready to train our residents in CPR. We're ready to put AEDs all over our community. We're ready to do what needs to be done, but we don't know what needs to be done because we're not actually being told what the real plan here is. So thank you very much for hosting this hearing. And I just want to say that what we're not talking about is response times or increased risk of death. And we just need all that across our county. Thank you.
Daniel Seibert, then Katrina Moody.
Hello, I'm Daniel Seibert. I'm from Greenville, Maryland, where we have fifteen percent coverage from our station. That is a horrifying number to hear tonight. And I just wanted to say too, thank God for all our firefighters and all our public servants. We appreciate the work you do. I'm sorry, Chief Green isn't here anymore. Oh, you're, I apologize, my mistake. Thanks for being here, and I appreciate you, Chief Green. So what I wanted to share is that I don't feel like eight minutes is very fast when lives and homes are on the line. And if we say that's our minimum standard, that's the worst acceptable amount of time, which in school is the equivalent of getting a D. It might be a passing grade, but I sure don't want my mom to find out about it. That's bad news. And I don't think that's something that we want to celebrate. And I struggle with hearing all the information that I've been seeing is about average response times. And when you have hundreds of data points in average response time, you can fill in the mistakes, the failures, the twelve-minute responses, the fifteen-minute responses, show up as a two- or three-second differential when you're dealing with hundreds and hundreds of responses. And so we don't really know how many of those have happened because we don't get that information, and we have to take the word of the fire department. But in Greenville, the fire department told us over the summer that the changes were part of the summer staffing overtime litigation plan. And then they said this was a temporary reallocation. And on November first, I noticed the letter, the same sentences that have been in four letters to the city of Greenville, I was taking the word temporary out. And so what we have been told isn't what we're finding is happening. And that's really frustrating because we realize this is a problem that's affecting everybody, and we want the whole county to get the coverage they need. But we want to be treated like adults, and if the real issue's gonna take longer, then don't tell us it's just for the summer. That doesn't serve anyone. Thank you everyone for your time.
Thank you. Katrina Moody, then Andy Bowen.
Okay, good evening, thank you for the time, for giving me to speak. First of all, I want to add, mention that there was a fire station that had a ribbon cutting, I believe November the seventh, two thousand sixteen, that was supposed to Clipper Ribbon Drive in Oxon Hill, Maryland, number eight fifty-one. Nothing has come to be seen as far as that was lost. The closing of fire stations is causing more stress on the fire stations that are left in existence. Those fire stations already have the areas that they are supposed to cover. So when you close the other fire stations, it's no way the existing ones can cover several different areas. Somebody's going to go without attention. I've sent several messages to Chief Green. I disagree with a lot of stuff that she said, and I'm sure she recognizes my name. But when you're sitting behind a desk making decisions, a lot of times in things like this, you need the input of people who are actually doing the work. And from my understanding, from various people I've talked to, she's the person that decides, well, I think I'll write this up. She writes it up, she approves it, and she implements. No one person should be the person that's being tried, be the lawyer, the jury, and the judge. Some of her things that she's talked about, I totally disagree with, and I think more attention needs to be paid to that. When you close these fire stations, it's going to cause home value to decrease. It's gonna cause insurance to go up. It's going to cause people to lose their lives and their livelihood. And I don't think everything is being considered in the way it should be. And as I stated before, I totally disagree with Ms. Green and a lot of the stuff I had, we're from the same area she's already touched on. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy Bowen. Then Leander McEwen.
Council, thank you for an opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Andy Bowen. I represent the Beltsville Fire Department. Been a member there for fifty years and one former chief. Our issues are misinformation or no information. Approximately a year ago, one of the career staff advised us that they were all being moved from the stations. There was no notification given in Beltsville. We ended up thinking about after pushing our local politician, Mr. Noga, we found out that yes, this is a fact, to remove the career people on specific things. This created a community meeting. We had this community meeting, and at this point in time, it kind of changed the format of the work, relocating the career people. We were temporarily moving them because the station was in disrepair and unsafe via. We followed through and had everything done, station inspected. In the end, there's nothing wrong with the station. They had asked us to sign a memorandum of understanding, which was discussed earlier, and basically we found it unacceptable for them to ask them to provide us with a better memorandum of understanding. That never occurred. We found out, we've been in Limbo for probably five months. There's been no information we get from the county fire chiefs. It's just different people, different levels, but nothing official. So now we're in a situation, we found out recently that the county fire chief has been trying to create a temporary station built with a police station in Beltsville. We're trying to figure out why do we need to build a temporary police station, a temporary fire station at the police station when it's been deemed that the firehouse is safe to be at? Our conclusion is, we need, we want to work with the county, we want to work with the fire chief, but we can't work if someone doesn't talk to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Leander McEwen. Hopey Alabuck. And Thomas Jones.
Hi, I'm Hopey Alabuck. I live on Ridge Road in Greenville, Maryland. An ordinary citizen, not even descended from firefighters.
I wasn't either, so.
We need our professionals back. It's very disconcerting to an ordinary citizen like me to see different conflicting data from what the county reports and what the community has collected itself and whatever you do in our News Review publicly paper. It shakes my confidence that what would help is to restore the staffing at the fire department for emergency response.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, and then Molly Rubenstein.
Hi, I'm Tom Jones, a longtime Greenville resident. I came here tonight to describe what we see in our community. When Tiffany Green started in twenty twenty, she told a local reporter that she would lead with, quote, "integrity and accountability." But when PGFD announced these cutbacks, they claimed they were only temporary. But there's no sign that was ever true. From the start, we learned PGFD is not transparent. And since then, PGFD has refused to respond to our city council, stonewalled our community newspaper, as already described, and even failed to respond to their official Public Information Act request in time of emergency. You've heard a lot tonight about Twenty-Two Ridge Road. Back in twenty twenty-three, which it now seems a long time ago, we had local responders. They knew that Twenty-Two Ridge Road isn't just a random address. Local responders knew it's our local senior Section Eight housing. A fire at that address has far greater risk to dozens of vulnerable neighbors, all age sixty-two and older. Local responders with local knowledge matter. We've heard a lot of numbers tonight to justify eliminating vital services, but frankly, we don't find those numbers trustworthy. As documented by our newspaper, PGFD's self-reported response times are simply wrong. The numbers do not add up. No one in the county would even explain those discrepancies to our reporters. Greenville has learned we can't trust PG County numbers. PG County Fire Department is also giving us the impression they want to eliminate ready and willing volunteers to rely on career firefighters alone. If you shoot yourself in the foot, you shouldn't complain, but it's smart to walk. And that's what it sounds like here tonight. In another recent case, also documented in a newspaper, a man with severe bleeding had to request that instead of calling the fire department, that the police department be called because we can trust the police department to show up. PG County Fire Department is counting on our police officers to provide medical care, and even though they claim that they are seeking to have only qualified responders, you're counting on someone with severe bleeding to know about the failures in the fire department and to reflect that in when the nine-one-one call goes in. I have to say, I don't see integrity, I don't see accountability.
Thank you.
Prove me wrong.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jones.
Back where they belong. Thank you very much.
Molly Rubenstein, Karen Coakley.
I'm a leader.
Thank you for pronouncing my name correctly.
It was love.
I want to thank all the emergency services personnel in the county. And yes, we need more people like them who are willing to sometimes lay their lives on the line to protect us. Since we've been talking a lot about numbers, I'll tell you how I would handle a personnel shortage of, say, one hundred and twenty-two firefighters. I would not remove one hundred and twenty-two career firefighters from four or five stations, leaving those desperately understaffed, increasing response times. I would take one hundred and twenty-two and divide it by the number of fire stations that we have in the county and take that number away from each station in the county. There is no good excuse to leave a particular area completely devoid of professional firefighters. It can be handled, again, by spreading it around the county. And I will say, I live in Greeneridge House in Greenville, and the twenty-three minutes that I was outside, I had come from a craft class, not my apartment, so I could not bring my cat with me. And for twenty-three minutes, I was panicking that maybe the fire was in or near my apartment and my cat, who I was not allowed to go back in and get, was going to die. And getting back into the apartment to see who was safe didn't calm me down for several hours. It's that upsetting when the response time is slow, and lives can be lost the seconds to make a difference. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Karen Coakley, then Charles D. Fowler, the fourth.
Chairman and members of the council, thank you for hearing me tonight. First of all, co-knues, co-knues, hugs to our first responders. They put their lives on the line, lives on the line every day. I'm Karen Coakley, I was president of the Beltsville Citizens Association for forty years. My volunteer involvement with the fire department goes back to when Jim Eastup was here. I was a community fire chief. Bayshore created a citizens advisory board, I served on that. You've heard comments about staffing. Well, there's other ways to this happening with the money in this county. You've heard comments about the facility. Chief Green had an assessment done on Beltsville Volunteer Fire Department because she claims that Beltsville Volunteer Fire Department has health hazards, has safety hazards. Her own assessment says they do not exist. But a letter she sent to Chief Peter Trupier, the chief of the plating board, says, "We need to build a temporary station to the tune of four-point-two million dollars because Beltsville Volunteer Station has health hazards, has safety hazards. There's waste of personnel, there's waste of staffing." The reason the volunteers have not signed the MOU- The reason the volunteers have not signed the MOU that was referred to is because in that MOU, it says, "If the Beltsville Volunteer Fire Department folds," the, the MOU is for fifteen years, "if it folds anytime during that time period, Prince George's County would get all of their assets." There is no need for a temporary facility, either on Beltsville's volunteers' property or on county property or retain, on park property. Another thing that is happening, because she talks about with the volunteers, Prince George's County, the time to get volunteers approved is currently three months, which is down from four or five months. All the other surrounding jurisdictions get their volunteers approved in one to two months time period. So, when you're talking about recruiting volunteers, we are losing volunteers because the other jurisdictions can get them approved sooner versus later. I've been happily sent you the assessment. I'm not making this up. You can see it. The assessment says, "For the age of the building, it is in great shape." The other thing the assessment addresses is that it's, you don't have to be ADA compliant because of the age of the building. And my understanding also is you can be a first responder and have it. You have a facility that's ADA compliant.
So, Ms. Coakley, I'm so sorry.
Did I run over? I'm sorry, but thank you.
Thank you. Charles D. Fowler, the fourth, and then Bill Orleans.
Good evening, council. Good evening, Chief Green. I'm here, lifelong resident, listening to numbers provided by the fire department and Fitching Associates, and it's shocking. Any of the numbers or anyone that's accepting something of emergency services to be available thirteen percent of the time, that's criminal. Every day when I go to work, I look back at my house and I think to myself, "Is there someone coming?" When I'm not home to save my family. What we see here tonight is, oh, there's a good chance in your community, no one's coming. They're coming, but they're not going to get there in time. What I heard is Chief Green has asked the council to support her in bolstering the fire department staffing. What I heard or surmised is that you guys haven't done it. That's got to be your priority, to bolstering the staffing of the fire department, bolstering the recruiting process. What I heard from Fitching Associates is, well, maybe change their work week, increase their work hours after they just talked about the unit utilization hours and how long they're on the streets already. That's insane. They're on the schedule for health reasons, for mental health, all those good things. Studies have been done. Even considering that is, is just criminal. We need to have these fire stations open. Many of the residents don't know when they arrive at the door, it's empty from station ten always station forty-nine. No one's there. Booing. Station thirty-nine, I would ask you to sit out there one day. A thousand calls during that time they talked about, how many times does the fire truck come out that door? I've got five kids are in this county. I'm a lifelong resident. My parents live here, my sister lives here, and I wonder when they need help will someone come? We talked about acceptable response times, that they've increased by many. Everything the fire department preaches is about time. Time is tissue when it comes to brain and stroke. Time is tissue when it comes to heart attacks. What happens every minute that there's not water put on a fire, it doubles in size. We didn't hear those, and we also didn't hear about the increase in unit utilization hours from the surrounding units. And thanks for your time.
Thank you. Bill Orleans, then Phil McCone.
Good evening, all. It's good to see this room filled tonight. Every hearing should have this room filled. The presentation of the chief and our county reference was made to efficiency of operations. I wasn't following along as that reference was made, so I don't know precisely what that related to. But I would think in matters of life and death, and you can say the property for that matter, efficiency should not be the determinant measure by which the department and its county council would like the department to operate on. It's something beyond simply efficiency and operations. Reference was also made to some terms which I did not understand, and I checked the back of the presentation looking for the last reading, ALS or BLS. I would not have known what that was. I acquired, the chief told me ALS is advanced life support and BLS is basic life support. I would think anybody in the county that are receiving any of the services of EMS would like as much advanced life support as possible as opposed to just simply basics or, I don't know if that's a cost item or not. But this relates to another question that I believe, by leading from the presentation, that whereas maybe in the past, county council has not provided sufficient resources to the fire department and EMS service, and more recently they have, and that would be the thing that's true. But I've been to a number of hearings, not so much in this room, but in, in, for my role, where district council was reading and approving developments and simply waiving out of public facility fees. And I don't know if that had led in the past to, among other things, shortfalls in providing resources to the fire department. I've been to this county nearly twenty-one years ago. And in almost all that time, I've been aware of the tension between the career professional firefighter, firefighters and volunteers. I've never fully understood it. I'm told tonight that tension is less, and I'm glad to hear that. But I, I'd like to suggest that in the twenty-first century, in a jurisdiction of nearly a million people, we should not be reliant on volunteers to provide this necessary service. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Orleans. Phil McCone, then Daniel Donahue.
I'm Phil McCone. I'm another Greenville resident, no direct connection to the fire department or anything. I, um, there's a lot I don't know, but what I know from how this all came down is, there's been an amazing amount of lack of collaboration with our community governments, with the volunteers. You know, when you hear some of it, I mean, it's obvious that the firefighters have to have acceptable work conditions. They can't, you know, work twenty-four hours and then be called back to another twelve. They have to be able to have work-life balance. These things are important to all of us. So, with a collaborative situation, with collaboration, with, with data exposure, giving us the real raw data, and it shouldn't require a, you know, an information request. And, you know, it could be a whole different scene, but the level of frustration and animosity that has been built up in our neighborhoods, you know, if you had taken our county, our, our town council along, our town government along, we would have come along too, you know, because we trust them. But our trust is really broken, so I hope that things are going to move in a better direction. And thank you for the firefighters for your service. And support the volunteers as well.
Mr. Donahue actually signed up twice, so. We're going to Michelle Snyder.
I'm Michelle Snyder from Beltsville, Maryland. This is the third time I've come to a meeting and it seems like we're at the same place. So, it looks like there's not enough money and there's not enough career firefighters. So, I've got a couple of solutions. It's really simple. When the paid firefighters can take the renewal classes, they should post so the volunteers, like my husband, can take classes at the same time. You're already paying for the instructors, you're already paying for the rooms, and you wouldn't have to pay the career fire, the volunteer firefighters to take those classes. You're already having the class, the renewal classes for the CDL, for the EMS. Someone said you're short on staff, have volunteers help. You want to outsource, have volunteers help. Someone said let's do EMSs. We need more EMSs. High Point High School has a ROTC program that runs four years. You can have an EMS program at High Point. Tiffany Green, on her, in her blog of what she did, she implemented, implemented something in schools. There's, you could do EMSs and when the kids graduate high school, they're a certified EMS. Just before the senior year, you can contact the Bureau of Education, work together with them. Volunteers, if they need to renew classes, reach, uh, the county government, reach out to retired fire instructors to give back to the community. So, they could come to these Beltsville communities, not Beltsville community centers, so they could come to the volunteer firefighter stations so the volunteers don't have to travel so far to try and find a place not close to them. This is ridiculous. We keep having this. There's not enough money, there's not enough staff. Do the ROTC EMS program, like, like I said, for High Point. Have the career volunteer firefighters take the classes while you're paying the career firefighters to take them. We don't need, volunteers don't need to be paid, but they need the classes. Someone said they didn't have someone that could sit in the front seat of the fire truck with, with the driver. Thank you. It's just frustrating that we pay so much for the county, have the taxes, and police representatives, and this is the third meeting I've come to.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm glad you could come in. I appreciate it. I wanted to let everybody know we've had some technical problems online, so if you want to watch it tomorrow, it'll be streamed tomorrow, but we've had some glitches. So, if you hear from anyone saying that the video wasn't great tonight, we apologize, but the, the stream will be fine. Wanted to invite Chief Green back up to address some of the questions that have been raised.
Thank you for the opportunity to come back up. This was a lot today, but we appreciate the opportunity to hear from everyone. And we take every single person that stepped up here, their concerns, their stake in seriousness. We're writing all those things down so that we can be able to address them. And yes, it's a time, I realize, people have come out tonight. I don't want to keep anyone any longer. So, as it relates to our staffing plan, this is a very complicated issue that, as I stated before, cannot be solved in one budget year. We are committed to working with this council, the administration, and this community for to create solutions to get our department to where it needs to be. I want to take this opportunity to remind this council and everyone here today that the men and women of this department, despite the challenges presented today, show up each day and provide excellent service. Even in two thousand twenty-three, when they were being held over, some repeatedly each month, they showed up. The difficult decision to reallocate personnel from our fire stations has not been easy. No fire chief wants to pull firefighters from stations, but as their fire chief, it's my duty to advocate and fight for their healthy, for their health, their safety, and their well-being. And that's what we will continue to do while working with this council and the community to find some missions. Thank you for your time on the report, Tom.
Thank you, Councilmember Fisher. You didn't have an opportunity to introduce yourself.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. I'm Councilmember Winnie Fisher, represent District Two, which is the highest all-inly park, Redwood, North Redwood, Mount Rainier area. I have a very vital fire station in my district, and I chair Health and Human Services and Public Safety. So, this last budget cycle, all our public safety agency budgets through my committee. I apologize for my lateness. I have another commitment in College Park that was on the books months ago, and I, I really could not skip that. So, I'm, I've really learned a lot from your concerns, and I was keeping tabs online and excited to work with you, Madam Chair, and council, and all my other colleagues to find solutions to move forward. And the only other thing I would add, which I'm sure Madam Chair mentioned, is that this council worked very, very hard to make sure that we had an adequate amount of firefighters in the budget this cycle. The fire department did not receive any cut, actually an increase from this council. And so, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Yes, thanks. Thanks for saying that. Yes, it was an extraordinarily difficult budget year, and just about every other agency did take a cut, but we gave an increase to the fire department so that they could hire a hundred and fifty additional firefighters, and the fire chief mentioned that. I think part of the problem, and I'm not going to get into the whole thing right now, is that people are leaving faster than we can hire them, and we need to speed up the hiring process so that we can have the firefighters onboard. It's one thing to put it on paid months, and another thing to have people actually trained in the firehouses. So, we learned a lot. We were all taking notes. This was streamed so that we'll be able to all take another look tomorrow, and we will stay in touch on this very important issue. And thank you all so much for coming out tonight. I hope that everybody learned something that we're going to, we're going to prepare. Thanks so much.